Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. This meeting will be livestreamed on Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. It can be found at www.youtube.com backslash C backslash Oshkosh Media. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Karns.
Here.
Peshal.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Karlin.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, would you lead us in the pledge of leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any modifications that we would like to do to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Yes? Do you have one?
I'll throw in a suggestion.
Sure.
I think we have some, would we want to move the consent agenda up above the workshop? I don't know if we have administrators here who are being, you know, waiting for that section.
So my plan was to recognize them within the superintendent's report, so I could do that on the front side.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Any other questions or suggestions related to the approval of the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move forward to the board and administrative reports. I have a small report here. I just wanted to spend some time just to acknowledge that we had done our diligence and had done the annual evaluation to of Dr. Davis here, and so I've kind of crafted a statement. The Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education recently completed the annual evaluation of Dr. Brian Davis on June 27th of 2022. The annual process involved full participation of the Board of Education and Dr. Davis on two occasions. Collectively, the Board and Dr. Davis identified strengths and priorities for 2022 through 2023 school years. In summary, the Board of Education believes that Dr. Davis has done an excellent job in his first year as superintendent of the Oshkosh Area School District. The Board of Education supports Dr. Davis and is looking forward to the ongoing focus of student growth. So that's what I have related to that. So thank you for your efforts and your leadership.
Thank you.
Next is recognition of some of some longstanding employees. And so I'd like to recognize those that are taking on the path to retirement. So first off is Gretchen Luloff. She was a media teacher assistant at Carl Trager Middle School. She was with the Oshkosh Area School District for 26 years. So Gretchen, thank you for your time and service to the Oshkosh Area School District community. Patricia Walter was an instructional 4K teacher assistant with the Ready for Learning Program. She has been in the district since 1991, a total of 31 years, teaching generations of children that have come up, you know, through our Oshkosh Area School District and not too far away from some of us actually as well. So, so, so thank you for your time and your effort and the, the growth that you have provided students in our community. So, thank you. That is all I have for my report. I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Davis to provide his, his report.
Great, thank you. So the superintendent's good news report for tonight highlights a very busy summer that we have throughout the, the school district. So students enrolled in the crafty kids at Jefferson Elementary School, spent time learning about different animals this summer. As part of the hands-on learning experiences, students were able to design animal habitats, including using clay to create animals and other things that would create different habitats. So a great job to everyone involved over at Jefferson. Students enrolled in the Fun with Spanish Summer School program at Oaklawn Elementary School, recently made their own ponchos, piñatas, and sombreros. They spent a week designing, building, and decorating, then after the, then after filling their piñatas with candy, they were able to take turns and breaking them open. Of course, some students did also choose to take their creations home and display their pieces of art. So congratulations to all those students who were involved in that. Nearly 80 of our educators, pre-K through high school, spent time this summer digging into our conscious discipline at the Conscious Discipline Summer Institute in Orlando. During this immersive experience, they learned how to support their own resiliency and the resiliency of students and families we serve in Oshkosh. This training has been incredibly powerful and a step forward in creating a rich school family experience for our students as they learn academic and lifelong skills each day. We're grateful for so many staff members who are willing to spend their summer learning and building their own skills so it can best support our students and schools as we get moving for the school year. So thanks to everybody's extra efforts on that. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West Wildcat softball team, being sectional champions this year. The team qualified for the WIAA State Softball Tournament held in Madison in early June and finished the season with a record of 19 wins and 12 losses. So congratulations, ladies. Oshkosh West also had a number of spring athletes sign letters of intent to play college next fall. Congratulations and best of luck to these talented super student athletes. The Oshkosh Summer School, our Summer Marching Band sounded great during the Oshkosh Fourth of July Parade. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to hear them. Students from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West came together to make great music and have fun doing something that they love, thanks to all the students and staff that made this summer learning possible. And this is an impressive one, so I just want to catch everybody's attention on this one. So Oshkosh students recently received worldwide recognition. The Bokstein Vulcan, the combined first Lego League team from Carl Trager, Perry Tippler, Elbs, and Oakwood brought home a second place out of 35,000 teams in a worldwide competition last month in St. Louis. I'll repeat that. Second place out of 35,000 teams in a worldwide competition. And it gets better. The students also recently completed a U.S. provisional patent application for their invention for this project, the Falcon Fire, a device that uses multi, multiple sensors to detect fires in cargo plane containers, then relays the alert to an app on the pilot's device. Falcon Fire can be used in other settings where container fires are, are an issue, potentially revolutionizing the safety of the cargo industry while saving lives. During the global event, two of our students also participated in a live innovation challenge, showing the world their brainstorming process, how they narrowed down their ideas and how they used that, that process to innovate a solution to their transportation issue. This is a remarkable accomplishment, and we are so proud of these students and coaches. And congratulations to everyone. Really unbelievable. Also, still amazed at the outpouring of support for our Brewing Futures Mobile Cafe. It was great to see so many supporters during the truck's ribbon cutting this past month. And students and staff have been busy with the food truck, making its way to over 40 events and appearances this summer. You can find Brewing Futures on Facebook and Instagram to stay up to date with where they're going to be headed next. The Brewing Futures Mobile Cafe is operated by our very own high school students who receive special education services, and it is helping our community understand the value, how valuable these future employees are. So this is just part of work that I've been doing since, since our last board meeting. I want to highlight our last bullet point, so I just got back from a two-day retreat. Leadership Academy was CSU Six down at Port Washington, so was there with Director Conrad and some of our high school and middle school administrators, doing work with Ted Nyski and CSU Six on managing change process and continuous improvement. So it was a really good, good opportunity of learning in the last couple of days. And finally, as a final point tonight, I don't think we have the slide up there, but I want to provide just some recognition for some special guests who are on the agenda a little bit later, our recommendations for our principal, two of our principal openings. So first of all, we have Emily Eisencheck. So Emily is, serves as a dean of students at Sand Hill Elementary School in Stoughton, Wisconsin. Emily is skilled at building positive relationships with students and families, staff, and community partners. Her extensive background in developing and implementing behavior support plans has also resulted in success for students and entire school communities. So just want to welcome, welcome Emily upon the approval by the board tonight to Reed Elementary School and the Reed community. We also have a familiar face moving into, potentially moving into the principalship at Washington Elementary. So Catherine Noble, who goes by Kat. So Kat is a, has served at Washington Elementary School since 2015 as a first-grade teacher. She has an extensive understanding of best practices of instruction and assessment, including a mastery of curriculum, curriculum and standards in place currently for the Oshkosh Area School District. Catherine's student-centered approach to classroom learning prioritizes high expectations for all and creates a culture of innovation. Additionally, Catherine's love of the Washington community is evident in all that she does to support her students, families, and colleagues. So I just want to welcome Emily and Kat to our team tonight. So, and just also, if you have an opportunity to see them in the flesh, and upon your approval, they'll be working as of 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. So, a lot of, a lot of work to do, but we're thrilled to have such talented leaders coming, coming to, coming to and staying in, in Oshkosh in those positions. So that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, we have district administrator supplemental reports. This one will be COVID-19 update, being led by Mr. Kemer.
Good evening. So the Winnebago County Health Department has continued to put out their weekly reports during the summer months, and the most recent report that came out last week showed that the case rate for the geographical boundary of our school district was at 131.8. And that was slightly lower than the week before. However, looking at the report that's due to come out tomorrow, it's bouncing back up to the 170 range. So either way, we're, we're still considered to be in the low category, given the fact that we're under 200 for a case rate, and the capacity of our hospitals remains high in terms of their ability to take on COVID-19 patients. When looking at, specifically at those individuals who are under the age of 18, the most recent report had 24 cases in the past seven days. When broken down by age group, 10 of those cases were children under the age of five. Five of those cases were children between the ages of five and nine. There were no cases for children between 10 and 14, and there was one reported case between children 15 to 17 years of age. So during the week of August 1st, we have a committee coming together to review the district's COVID-19 handbook and to make updates to that handbook, which we will then present to you shortly thereafter. Includes my report.
Any questions?
Thank you for keeping us updated.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have reports, other reports from committee chairs or from members of committees that support the Oshkosh Area School District or boundaries. So first up, we have a report from Dr. Herzog related to the Wisconsin Association of School Board meeting updates.
Thank you, Mr. Peshal. I recently attended the WASB Summer Leadership Institute in La Crosse. The focus was on servant leadership, making sure we have an outward orientation and that we have a focus on serving others rather than promoting ourselves. We also had sessions related to excellence for all children and looking at the roles of the school board and superintendent and how those impact the critically important work that we serve every child in our school district. As was noted by several of the consultants, what happens in the boardroom matters. What happens in the boardroom matters in the classrooms, and that doesn't mean we have to be 7-0 in all votes, but we need to put students first and make sure that we have a shared vision and that we continue to work toward that. On Saturday morning, we heard from several WASB consultants, including Cheryl Stinsky and Patty Vickman, who have been with us in the past, talking about creating a team that performs at high levels, the importance of trust in a school board culture and aligning our actions and strategies so that we are working effectively as board members with our superintendent. There are two other meetings coming up that would have relevance to folks around this table. The first of those is October 6th. It's the WASB Regional Meeting. It will be held in Neena, and it's a great opportunity to network with about, oh, I don't know, 75 people from districts in our region. And finally, the Annual State Convention. If you haven't put that on your calendar yet, that's January 19th through the 21st in Milwaukee. It's called the Wisconsin State Education Convention. I know that we have a couple of applications that were submitted by members of our district to present and to highlight some of the very positive things going on in Oshkosh. So I hope that your schedules will allow you to at least get down there for, for one of those days. One other thing that will have an impact on a meeting will be the presentation that we've heard in the past from two of our now graduates who have been promoting civic education. And we had a resolution earlier this year regarding support for the work of two, the two students, Annika Larson and Simone Laballoy, I believe, is, is the other student. This board has an opportunity to submit a, a proposal to the State Wisconsin Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly to make that part of the lobbying effort and priority of the, the state association. So you'll be hearing more from that, more about that because it's due to the state by September 15th. So you'll hear more about that in, in August, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Peshal. The Policy and Governance Committee meeting met June 27th, Monday, June 27th. We went through a whole list of policies. Some of us just highlight some of the ones that we made recommendations on. B, 6152 student fees, fines, and charges. This policy was revised to include a reference to the DPI fee categories based upon Board of Education versus Sinclair. It is recommended that the board develop and share clearly delineated fee information for all parents on all student fees. C, 6152.01 waiver of school fees or fines. Basically, this policy was updated to clarify eligibility for free and reduced lunches as related to school fees. The information will be provided from parent, parents directly to the district or through district certification through the Division of Children and Families State Database regarding additional income eligibility, et cetera. Policy 1421 Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirement. This is a new policy regarding the employee self-reporting requirement. It has determined that there are policies for professional and support staff, but not for all administrat, not for all administrative staff. So basically, that's just getting all groups on the same page. J, 3121 Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirement. That policy required, revision requires employees to report any arrest, indictment, conviction, no contest, or guilty plea, or other adjudication for any criminal or municipal offense within a specific timeline. And then P, 4122.01 Drug-Free Workplace. We updated that policy to include inserting, inserting new headings, adding clarification, adding references to the Drug-Free Workplace Act of 1988. And Policy 3161 Unrequested Leaves of Absence/Fitness for Duty, just to make it more user-friendly. So that should do it for my committee report.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next, we are at the public forum portion of the meeting. I don't have a signup list here. I will wait to find out if we have anyone. Thank you. So we have no one signed up for non-agenda-related public forum or agenda-related public forum. So I'm going to move on past the, the public forum portion of the meeting and move on to our workshops. So our, we have one workshop scheduled this evening. It is, it is a presentation from the Facility Advisory Committee 2.0 to provide us recommendations on potential future facilities in the Oshkosh Area School District. I'm going to let Dr. Davis set that up, and we will go from there.
Great, great. So, so we have Dr. Gunlock and Clint Selly from, from, from Bray Architects here with us tonight to work through the recommendations. They'll go through the background and what the delivery is from the Facility Advisory Committee 2.0. I think it's important just to, to understand that this is an initial report from the committee. There is no action to be taken tonight. It's really just an opportunity to hear what the committee had been working on throughout the six months. We had a lot of people represented, which Dr. Gunlock will go through, just some of those details. But just to set the stage, this is really for the board to be able to hear what the committee recommendation is, ask some questions, and then what we anticipate, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, but we anticipate that the board bringing this, these recommendations back to another workshop in October to start talking about details and alignment with the larger consolidation plan. And so I just want to make sure there's a frame of reference for what tonight is and what tonight isn't as we move forward. So with that, I'll, I'll have Dr. Gunlock take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are thrilled to be able to bring this information to you this evening. As Dr. Davis said, this, this has been a work in progress for some time, and it even predates Dr. Davis's time in, in the district. My, my job this evening is to go over a little bit of the background and process summary so that people understand how this is interconnected with the past efforts and the overall consolidation plan. I'll then turn it over to Clint, who can give us some of the specifics around the recommendation. We're also fortunate enough to have members of the FAC, Facility Advisory Committee 2.0 with us as well, to give their thoughts and views on this, and then obviously open it up for questions. So as I said, this was several years in the making. It really started in 2017 when we had the facility study that highlighted the original $116 million in repairs that needed to go into some of our aging schools. If you'll recall, in the 2019-20 school year, we, we created the Facility Advisory Committee 1.0 that looked at all of the needs and had to come up with an idea to present to the board on where do we start? Where do we begin with this? They did a great job and provided a consolidation plan to the board that the board unanimously passed that gave us our four-phased plan that, that started all of this off. Obviously, in 2020-21 school year, we were fortunate enough to have a successful vote in the November referendum on both referendum questions, and we began the design of Vell Phillips Middle School. This year, 2122, the, the design and construction of Vell Phillips Middle School is, is going and ongoing, and we're also in the middle of the process of designing the new elementary school that will be built on the Webster site. At the same time, we realized that there were some missing pieces from the original work of the Facility Advisory Committee that was beyond their scope, and that's when the board decided to charge a second version of the Facility Advisory Committee to take a look at those needs, take a look at all the options out there, and present some recommendations to you for your review.
I would just like to add, going back to 2017, the emphasis should be on repairs. This was not to bring our learning or instructional components up to the 21st century. It was primarily to repair and fix the physical buildings.
Correct.
And we, and we recognized that around that time as a board, that we, we really needed to pay attention beyond the buildings to the facilities that students use, whether those were arts or they were athletics, because there were just a lot of needs out there. And it, it was highlighted for the board when the board was asked to replace both tracks at our two high schools because they were in such bad condition that the running tracks had cracks in them. I went out there and looked at them personally and saw funny things growing in those. So it, it was a, a safety issue as much as anything, and we had schools who were refusing to bring their athletes here to compete because the, our tracks were in such bad shape. So that alerted to the, alerted the board to the fact that we needed to pay attention to our facilities, our athletic facilities and other learning facilities, namely the arts, so that we were not in a situation where we had safety issues for, for our students.
Absolutely. One other thing to point out is the $116 million that Dr. Herzog points out were just for repairing, in some cases, 100-year-old-plus facilities. That was in $2017. Those costs obviously continue to rise. They rise a little quicker right now than we'd like, but they're, they're going up. So as far as the FAC 2.0 process, really what it boiled down to was we realized there were four other areas we, we needed to take a look at. One was indoor athletic, multipurpose facilities. Another one was fine arts performance facilities, outdoor athletic competition facilities, and aquatic facilities. So those were the four focal points of the Facility Advisory Committee 2.0. That is what the board had charged them with to go take a look at. They've spent several months meeting, in some cases, more than once a month, to go through all the different options, look at what's going on in the other areas, and begin processing what types of recommendations they would make to you. The Facility Advisory Committee process, what we did is we brought in outside community members to serve on that committee. They represented the community. They evaluated all the options presented. Their job is to make recommendations to you. But we also brought in what we call subject matter experts. These were people who provided information to the FAC. They did not necessarily, you know, vote on prioritization or any of that. Their job was simply to answer questions and provide their, their expertise. So having swim coaches there to provide their expertise in terms of what would quality swimming facilities look like is an example. They also served as a liaison because not everybody could be at every meeting, so they would serve as a liaison to go back and forth and, and keep everyone informed. I think that's yours.
All right. I'll turn it over to Clint.
Thank you. Good evening. Also with me is Nate Concedine. So Nate was heavily a part of the process as well, as well as also doing some other stuff in the district you heard about earlier. Again, we met about 10 times with the group between February and May, and we kind of did break things into each of the kind of four components. So we had several meetings for each one, so we didn't kind of lose track of any of them as we went through, kind of giving each of them a fair shake, looking at it. Again, one of the main components, and again, difficulties in even budgeting things at today's dollars, was we did try to forecast this out, kind of recognizing probably the absolute earliest we could consider looking at this would be in 2027, likely as part of when the Phase Two projects would start to be considered. In addition, again, I think to the, to the, the guidance and the charge that was given to the committee, we saw several themes really start to pop up. One of those being that, that what we should do should really kind of treat this and help enforce Oshkosh as a destination city. What can we do as part of this to not only serve the needs of our communities, but really set Oshkosh apart from surrounding communities and, and create something unique, and also encourage people to come to Oshkosh to live and work? We also talked a lot about who these facilities are for. Again, I think first and foremost, they're for our students, for the, the district students, community members, local clubs, and then, and then again, as a weekend or tournament-type setting for various events. And then the project funding. So how will we, how will we pay for these? Again, we're, we're sitting in a scenario where we have a four-phased plan right now that, that will carry a large price tag as, as inflation. We get new numbers each day, and today was not a good day for that. But again, moving forward and kind of recognizing, again, these are unique, these are special, in some cases, special amenities, but important amenities for a lot of students throughout the district. And I think the district anticipates some public funding and donation being kind of a Kickstarter for each of these various facilities to move forward. So again, in a very condensed version, we're going to kind of go through a, a little bit of, of what the, the group went through, starting with the indoor multipurpose facility. So in, in, in essence, what this is, really two big components. Is, one of its an indoor turf facility. This is a very, we're seeing this a lot throughout the state. So the image on the left is West DePere. It's, and what we talked about as a group is really creating a, a full football slash soccer-sized indoor facility that would be in support of practices for the district. Again, this would support really virtually all sports, while, while yes, line for football and soccer, again, baseball, softball. Track could utilize it, the community could utilize it, just a great multipurpose facility. We talked a lot about what the structure of that would look like. UWO has kind of a dome inflated-type structure. The West DePere example here is a steel frame structure. So we thought as a group in terms of longevity and energy conservation that this, this type facility would be a little better served long-term for the district. The other big component is a, a fieldhouse component. So the Champion Center in the Appleton area was seen as a great example of a really well-laid-out facility. Again, flexible use for practices, as well as a, a great tournament and weekend event venue. So a very rough rudimentary floor plan of what this could potentially look like. Oh, boy, did I invite it worse. So a rough rudimentary floor plan, as I mentioned, a full football slash soccer field indoor facility. The, the fieldhouse component. And then the majority of the spectator seating would be surrounded around the fieldhouse on that, that upper floor plan. So the floor plan kind of in the upper right there would be the, the second floor of that. We talked a lot about, again, hospitality as well. These tournament venues do need some seating, some space for, for them to, for people to congregate, get concessions and that, so that's a vital part of this process as well. Our next big project we looked at was the Performing Arts Center. Just a couple of quick examples to just show, I think, a few points we talked about. Sun Prairie East High School, this is actually their, their old high school now. They're, they're in the process of finishing up West High School. But this was a, a great example of a, a nice-sized seating venue. It does have balcony seating. You can kind of see there's an orchestra pit here, so we talked about that being a really integral part of what would be needed for this venue. Showing a picture on the right, the lower right there of the, the rigging. So again, a fly loft structure, so we can have, you know, first-class performances. And then again, this has a venue having a lobby to support pre- and post-production functions within that space.
I would just like to point out that we have one large venue, which we all know and are very fond of, the Alberta Kimball Auditorium, which had been named the Civic Auditorium prior to the passing of Mrs. Kimball. That facility hosts not only west music productions, but also north, because the north facility is inadequate for especially choir concerts, orchestra concerts. The stage, as I understand it, is not very deep, and so it's not able to host many things, nor is it large enough to adequately seat at least 50% of the students. So the Alberta Kimball gets used very heavily. If any of you have been to holiday concerts, usually in the months of November and December. It doesn't seem to matter the size of the elementary school, that Alberta Kimball, which seats about 1,400 students, is pretty full. So I don't think there's, there's not a question in my mind that we need something on the north side as well.
Thank you. That's a wonderful segue.
Thank you.
So the, I guess just touching a little bit on the Kimball, the, the subject matter experts did acknowledge and restated many of the things that you said, that it is a great venue and has served the community very well. They, they did say there are a few shortcomings. The lobby is a little bit on the small side. The bathrooms, I think, are kind of in a, a little bit of a difficult location. And then there really isn't back-of-house functions, like dressing rooms and stuff, so they utilize the current band and, and music and choir rooms, which can lead to some potential issues with, you know, people getting into instruments and stuff. However, they did state that, you know, as we look out to Phase Three, which looks at west, that likely we would find a solution to some of those things. So they really did prioritize addressing the, the north auditorium's solution. So again, there's, there's some needs there, but again, I, I think in, in the, the spirit of what we were looking for as part of this analysis, they really focused on the north. So the, the image on the left is kind of the overall look at the north high school floor plan. The red blob is, is our proposed addition. So what we're proposing is to add on, rate, rate where the current auditorium is, kind of into the parking a bit. And again, having a, a nice-sized lobby, ample seating, wonderful stage area with the supporting backstage dressing room spaces within that facility. We had some discussions about, you know, what to do with the current auditorium. So the way we've kind of budgeted is that it will get some form of renovation, but again, we'll, we'll kind of tackle what the specifics of that will be down the road, if it remains some type of a, a large group instruction or supports the, the building in another form or fashion.
I have a question on that. With the referendum that was passed in November of 2020, there were dollars authorized to move internal office areas to the exterior of the building, and north is one of those. Where would that new entrance and office area be relative to this drawing?
Yeah, we had talked about it.
I'll just, just to make, we had talked about moving the entrance, entrance to this location up here. So that this really would not impact all this plan for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that not a pointer? Does that push that?
No, it's a pointer.
Okay, all right.
Okay. The third project we looked at was the Aquatics Center. Again, we kind of studied and looked at a number of recent pool projects throughout the state. And I think what really intrigued our committee was the potential, again, to create something special in Oshkosh. And with the idea that we are combining, we would be combining two kind of schools, two programs into one facility, and really essentially the need to still have enough pool space to support two separate teams potentially practicing at the same time. We started to gravitate towards the idea of a 50-meter pool. So the pool that you see up there, Satterholm Family Aquatic Center, is the newer facility at the UW-Madison campus. And what's unique about a 50-meter pool, that's an Olympic-sized pool, there's really only two or three of them in the state of Wisconsin, and they're, they're more on the southern side of the state. So from a, a need perspective of the school, it really served the ability for two teams to be practicing at one time. But then as a competition venue, it would be really first-class in the, the northern part of the state, and again, really serve that destination piece. So we really gravitated towards creating this venue like this with ample, again, ample spectator seating and, and support of that. The other few pieces that we talked about that would be wonderful amenities to include in this. Ashwabanon High School was an example. They provided a warm-water therapy-style pool, also kind of a learn-to-swim-style pool. So again, at a warmer temperature to support the, the senior community, because the competition pools always kept it at a cooler temperature. And then the other piece we talked about was some type of a splash pad or, you know, a little more fun area within this facility to, again, to support the rec and, and support the community for that.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Looking at those pictures and looking at, and some of these other items were maybe trying to compete, but we're trying to match kind of what's going on in other parts of the state. This would be an item that just isn't there, you know? Like, talk about destination, I mean, anybody in the valley who wants to compete in swimming or, or like, I mean, that's immediate, as you said, you said destination, but I was, I was thinking the same thing before. It's, it's an amazing piece that would, we're not competing against anybody else to match that. They would, you know, that would be incredible.
Yeah, I would, I would argue that indoor turf facility would be pretty, pretty impactful and, and unique. Again, the other ones that exist are, tend to be on the smaller side. They're 50, 60 yards. Obviously, UWO has a, a full soccer field. So from a K-12 kind of aspect, it would be, it would be unique. I believe Rhinelander's was the only one that has a, a full football field size, so.
So for the record, the indoor football field, the way it was drawn up would be bigger than what Kimberly's?
Yes. Yeah, Kimberly is 60 yards. This is, again, just a, a diagram of what this facility could look like. Again, we didn't have a site in any of these cases, so we're kind of just trying to show kind of, from a bubble diagram perspective, what it could look like. Again, the, the naditorium term is for where the 50-meter pool would be. Again, locker rooms surrounding that. We, again, talked a lot about, you know, community versus school usage of locker rooms, having, again, space for people to go when they're not watching their, their child swim, which is, if you've been to a swim meet, is most of the time. And then, again, that warm water and splash pad function within it. And then finally, our outdoor facilities, and this one's, I think, a little easier for people to wrap their head around, because it's something more of us are probably more familiar with. But the idea here would be to create a shared, the, the item on the right there would be a shared stadium for, again, for soccer and football needs for both of the high schools. We do not have a track shown here. As, again, as mentioned earlier, the tracks, as constructed at both high schools, work well and serve the needs. And the idea then, at the middle school level, would be likely to build something potentially out at Trager, and then we're in the process of looking at the current Merrill site for kind of a north-side middle school track. What we think that does is really makes a much better spectator and stadium-type atmosphere when the track is not there, which forces the seats to be further pushed outward. I'll show you a quick image that we kind of modeled the stadium after in, in one second. Baseball, softball side, again, creating a, a great venue, both to support the school district, as well as to support tournaments and, and weekend-type events. So again, the, the four fields for softball and, and youth baseball, and then the two larger, more advanced baseball-level fields, as well as, again, concessions and, and some batting cage and storage areas. There's also another component, we, again, borrowed from some of our, our neighbors. The Miracle Field would be a handicap-accessible playground and field, which is a, a really nice component of this. Parking's a pretty big part of this. Again, the idea for the stadium would be roughly 4,000 seats. This is kind of what we modeled the idea after. This is, again, Sun Prairie. This just opened, I believe, within the last two years. This is their shared stadium between the, the two high schools they will have. And, and again, just creating a, a wonderful and, and unique environment for them, a great spectator venue and, and a, a facility that is being utilized for sectionals and, and, and those type of events as well.
I was just in that stadium about a month ago, watching my kids play soccer in there, and it's a very interesting venue. I had never seen anything like that, so that was.
Yeah, there's a little more history there. That was traditionally where their, their, their field were. They won state titles and stuff there. So when we originally built East High School, or what will become East High School, they wanted to keep this as their competition venue. And, and now with them building the second high school, it just made all the sense in the world to continue that and utilize it as a shared-use facility versus a facility that's really only used a handful of times throughout the year.
Can I just ask a question? So that Sun Prairie facility, that is not just that, that soccer-football field? It also, does it also have the baseball fields and everything connected to it, or?
No, in this particular case, that, that, this is just this, yeah.
Okay, got it.
So for those of you that saw the article in the paper, and again, the, the main caveat here is, is that we're projecting this out. So we're trying to be a bit, as responsible as we can with regard to the inflation numbers that we're seeing, and, and, and looking, again, out to about a summer of 2027 bid date. So again, roughly $146 million to $154 million price range for, for all four of the projects together. Again, we have much more information with regard to this. The idea is that these are as complete cost as we can, so including everything except for land acquisition at, at this particular time.
When you say projecting that out, are you, do you have like a certain inflation number in there?
Correct.
That you're projecting will occur each year until '27?
Yes.
So if by some chance inflation comes down, hopefully, that number could be quite a bit lower?
We, we, we would hope that would be the case. Again, I, I, you know, we hope this is a worst-case scenario. I suppose it could go the other way, and inflation gets worse. But yes, we, we, we're doing, I think, as best we can to project what we think is a reasonable number to carry for now.
So for the public's sake, that number should be, you know, you're projecting a little high, or you're projecting with current inflationary trends, you know? Is that safe to?
I, I, I think it's a comfortable number. In this market, it's hard to say anything's high at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
So does that, that number is, is that a number? Because one of the other things that we've been having to address is that this is a number that's gonna go for referendum. So, and, and I guess from my perspective, I won't be on the board at that time, but we wouldn't go for a rough, we, our hope is that we wouldn't go for a referendum at that amount. We would be looking for partners that would be willing to donate to these projects, specifically around their interest, that could lessen what that number would be over time.
Correct. Yeah, that's kind of the communication we've talked about, is we, we really need some, someone or something to jumpstart each, each of these. Again, I think our, you know, the, the other consolidation plan, we're talking about academic spaces, which I, you know, I'm assuming for most people is, is the priority, that we need to make sure our, our, our educational spaces are adequate, and, and we're addressing those in a, in a timely fashion. And, and these are wonderful amenities. I think that, you know, kind of the, help, again, create that destination-type thing. So yes, I think the, the donor aspect of this will be very needed to get them kick-started. And timing-wise, I don't, I don't know that there's the idea that these would all go at the same time either. It's, there's probably gonna be some type of a staggered process.
First, I'd like to thank the Facilities Advisory Committee that is here tonight, Kim and Jim and Karen. I think you're on that committee, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done to put this together. The first comment I have is that when you think about tournaments, soccer, wrestling, baseball, softball, if you are a parent that has children in these sports, you have visited other areas and spent a significant amount of money in other areas, at restaurants and hotels. So when I look at this proposal, I think about the benefit to our community from a business perspective. Our businesses will benefit from us being able to have these kind of tournaments in our town, because they bring in a lot of people who will spend the night and spend money at restaurants and go shopping. So this is a huge investment, not just for our students, but also for our community. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, when it comes to our football resources, some people think it's a benefit for us to have J.J. Keller and use the Titan Stadium. However, I would like to point out that we spend, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, upwards of $100,000 a year to rent that facility, and that is money that could be invested in our own facility. Not to mention that when our students cannot access the field because it's flooded, we do, we do not have practice access to J.J. Keller. We only can access our own football fields outside of west and north. And when we, when it's flooded, our students are running the halls. And sometimes they run the halls around buckets because our roofs are leaking. And so the ability to have some sort of indoor facility for our athletes is critical, in my opinion. So I wholeheartedly support this presentation, and I think you guys have done an extraordinary job bringing these needs forward. And I can't wait to find out, you know, where our next steps take us, because I do believe that these are all great ideas, and I thank you very much for your hard work.
Well, thank you for the wonderful segue once again. That brings us to next steps.
I didn't even need to.
Yeah, perfect. So, so next step, so where, where do we go from here? Again, this was really just providing you an opportunity to hear from the Facility Advisory Committee on recommendations. So next step is, is for the Board of Education to go through a process of aligning recommendations with the, with our consolidation facilities plan. I think we'll, we'll begin that work on October. Uh, I think we'll, we'll begin that work on October 12th, which would just be in a, in a workshop form. And I use the word, um, alignment and aligning versus prioritizing, uh, mostly because we have to understand that this is going to be a really fluid process. We have to stay open and nimble to potential donors and interests that we don't even know exist yet. Um, and, and I don't think we want to box ourselves into any one of these projects. Really they're, they're all important. They're all needs in their specific areas. And they all fit under this larger umbrella of the consolidation plan. So I think aligning that, uh, aligning our projects with that plan will be an important process. And we'll begin that, um, in, uh, in October. Continuing district, uh, financial planning. So that, that will continue to play itself out, um, as we, as we go through each fiscal year. Uh, developing community partnerships. So that's something that's been important. Uh, you'll hear from, uh, from some of our FAC members, uh, here shortly. But, but also, uh, some of our business partners who may be interested in, in supporting, uh, in sponsorship or in some other capacities, supporting these projects will be really important. And then for us to set up some structures around fundraising, uh, and a donation process formally. So when we have people that we know are interested, um, we can give them a really specific articulate, uh, donation process um, to be able to get these things moving as quickly as possible. We know that we need these facilities yesterday. Um, and we know that it's important, as, uh, was mentioned, um, you know, really important to the business community to be able to get these things going as soon as possible. So we want to set up the structures, uh, for that to happen and then continue to work, um, with, uh, with our partners, um, and in our community, uh, as we would unfold the consolidation plan. But I wanted to, uh, just also introduce and, and, and formally publicly thank, um, some of our members from the FAC 2.0, uh, committee. Uh, so we have, uh, Kim Nguyen, um, Jim Chitwood and Karen Bowen with us tonight here. Uh, so they were part of, uh, our process of, of, uh, community members coming in to be able to give, uh, feedback, get us grounded, give us, uh, some ideas about, um, directions to go in each one of these, uh, four areas. So I just asked them to, to, uh, comment a little bit. They can provide, uh, just some of the feedback that we had from our frequently asked questions, um, and then any questions that you'd have for them and provide any perspective that they'd like to share, just really from your experience in being part of that process. So thank you for being here tonight, um, and, uh, thanks for, um, for your time, uh, committed on this process. So, um, yeah, so I'll kick it over to you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Kim Nguyen. I've been, uh, an Oshkosh resident for many years now. Parent of two boys in the school district, although one just graduated, um, and will be going on to U W Oshkosh this fall. I was a member of the 2014 and 2016 budget reconciliation committees and the 2019 facilities advisory committee 1.0. Uh, I work as a systems architect at a software consulting business. The, I, I wanted to say that the FAC this time was a varied group, very, very group with representation from students, parents, former students, uh, residents, former school board members. The rec department, coaches, teachers, facility managers. I mean, it was a wonderful way to get such a wide perspective, many insightful perspectives that helped us, uh, sift through a lot of data, a lot of options. Uh, and, and it was a very measured, open and collaborative process. So we distilled all of this into this plan that we're very happy to present tonight. It's our hope that this plan gives all Oshkosh residents, current and future, a roadmap for what we would like to see happen for this community. When my wife and I arrived here 27 years ago, the city was known more for saying no to investment, no to building a brighter future. I will say when I was young, I was a geek who didn't enjoy sports and I was regularly the last pick when it came time to choosing teams. No, I was the last pick. But it is possible to grow wiser and I have seen how sports, music and theater enrich the lives of students, their families and their community. In my family, I have seen firsthand how sports and the performing arts keep students engaged in and enthusiastic about their schooling. These facilities that we talked about will touch lives far beyond those of the students who directly participate in the activities. I am so proud to see this community come together to imagine a future that will enrich the lives of students and help them develop into well-rounded human beings.
All right, I'm Jim Chitwood. I live on, uh, County Road R in Black Wolf. Our kids went to Lakeside, South Park and, and West. We have three sons. I was on the board in the nineties for three, three terms. And I always also had the privilege of being on the design team for, um, Trager School. And I'm very proud of what, what we did out there. To familiarize myself with the current facilities, Brad and Craig, uh, the two A Ds gave me tours. By the way, if you haven't had a tour of the underbelly of the West High Pool, uh, don't do it. Wear a face mask and, no. But you know, I had a chance and they gave me a tour of all the facilities because I had been away for a while. And so, uh, our, our kids had great experience in schools academically, co-curricular and sports. Um, we, we had a requirement, if you're going to be a jock, you're going to be a fine art. So they are all in band. And so they had a good time in the, in the two bands at South Park and at, and at West High. You need to know I have no direct interest and my kids live elsewhere. I don't have any grandkids that would be going to any schools here, I don't expect, and our great grandchildren. So I'm just here for the interest of students who, uh, will be coming here in the future to live in the Oshkosh area. I think we want our Fox Valley Technical College graduates, our high school graduates, our U W O graduates, other academic endeavors, uh, graduates to maybe stay in Oshkosh. And if they stay in Oshkosh for employment, to actually live in Oshkosh and have our, um, you know, have our schools, uh, educate their children. Um, we have, uh, we have excellent road systems. Highway 41 goes north, highway 41 goes south, Amro Road, uh, 21, 45 to go up towards Winnicott. Why do we want employed people in Oshkosh, new people that come to town for employment to search other places? Parents and families search for good schools. And, um, if they're working in Oshkosh, I want them to go to school here and their children go to school here versus driving north. And maybe if someone gets a job in Amro or Manassar, Nino, North Fond du Lac, maybe they want to drive up here for school or live here for school and drive to work versus the other way. And so I think we need to be, I think someone here mentioned, Clint mentioned destination. And we've talked about that, that we need to be a destination city and a destination school district. And so I think, uh, uh, parents, like I mentioned, shop around and we need to be, you know, need to be aware of that. Or by the way, our current pools are good for one thing, swimming lessons. There are not competitive pools any longer. Uh, divers at north can't dive. Uh, then, you know, I guess that's right in the middle. You, you can't have swimming. You can't have both things going on at the same time. And West is not a competitive pool. Actually, U W Oshkosh has issues of being a competitive pool. Um, their pool is not, uh, state of the art either. And so, um, we had mentioned, Stephanie mentioned, uh, we want to be a place where athletic teams and drama teams and speech, uh, teams and one act plays and music competition in the district, uh, where we have lots of spectators can be there. But we also in our conference, maybe to have conference events, uh, co-curricular and athletic. And maybe district, um, and maybe state meets that could be here in the future to fill up the restaurants and the hotels and things like that. And so, um, I think, um, we have a lot of work to do, uh, but I think we need to offer first-class facilities for our students.
Very briefly, I want to say that, I don't know how many of you have had this experience, but when I was on the school board, I would, I was occasionally accosted in the aisles of pick and save by certain types of people who would say, why are you paying so much for X, Y or Z? This is Oshkosh. This isn't, uh. Well, as someone who didn't grow up here, it, it broke my heart because after all, we are a great community. We wouldn't live here if we weren't, right? So I think Clint pointed out that what in particular regarding the aquatic facility, but all of these facilities and all of our schools, and I must say, we have done a much better job in the, through the last two referenda for, uh, making something special for Oshkosh. Something special for our kids. I have four grandchildren who do go to school here and probably will stay here. And I want them to stay here. I, I don't want them to think, gee, maybe we should move to Sun Prairie because they have X, Y or Z. So I think it would be something special for Oshkosh.
I just had a, a fleeting thought that many people want to truck, uh, Oshkosh Corp. to go out east, to go south, go in a variety of directions, but they stayed here. And they will have many, um, many, um, new employees throughout the next decades who will want to work at Truck and will want to live here. And so I think, you know, there is a, there is a corporation that put their money towards Oshkosh. And I think the citizens can do the same thing. We have a couple, two or three things we need to address up there, I guess, too. Long introductions to the three questions, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if you will, sure.
All right. Well, uh, a question that we were thinking about was what is the timing of these projects? And, uh, as Superintendent Davis said, that it's not necessarily that we want to stick to a set schedule because it'll be interesting to explore ways that we can obtain revenue and donations. So if the timing of the projects will actually be determined based on private donations and sponsorships. And of course, uh, any voter referenda that we need to go through for phases two and three of the facility consolidation plan.
How will our children get to these new venues? As the committee looks, we don't have a lot of vacant land or territory, uh, near either one of the high schools nor, um, somewhere in between. So, um, some of these facilities might be on the fringe of the city. And, uh, what, what should we do? How will we get our, our children transported to these activities? And I think we need to first of all, not think about today's transportation offerings that we have for our kids. Is once we build something, um, between our school district and maybe the city, bus systems, transportation systems will be determined to see that any and all, uh, children who participate in these events will be able to access, uh, um, the possibility of doing that. So it's too early to determine how we will transport. But I sure am confident that next, the future boards of education will find out a way that all children can get transportation.
Would you like to take the third one?
Well, I probably know less about it than you do, but the answer to that question is yes. The rec department will be, will, will be continuing in its current role. I think that there was some concern among some members of our committee when we first started out that we were going to be trying to take members away from the rec department, the senior center and, uh, the, the Y. But we are not doing that. We will work together as much as we can. We already do that, as you know, swim, swimming and that sort of thing. So.
One thing I wanted to add to that is that we, we had a, a member of the rec department, rec department in our committee. And, uh, we looked at some of the, the, the way that we looked at the facilities and the way that we arrived at the particular configuration of some of these, for example, the, the warm water pool and the splash pad in the aquatic facility. Those are really intended specifically to address the needs of the rec department because they, they obviously offer a much wider range of programming to the wider community. So it's, uh, those two aspects, I'm just picking on them, um, are not specifically for students, um, but they are for the wider community. So we did look at a lot of these facilities with that perspective in mind, which is to broaden the appeal.
And we are happy that Bray Associates showed us so many opportunities that are existing in other cities. You just saw a few slides here, but they provided us with many throughout Wisconsin that are just, um, excellent facilities that are serving their students.
I, I'd like to make a final comment about the North High School auditorium. There was, there were a couple of things said about that earlier, but the North High School auditorium has zero facility for putting on shows, for putting on concerts. Essentially, you can't do it. It was not actually built as that kind of an auditorium, from what I can understand. I was surprised to learn during this process that it was actually built, those areas at the back were built to be classrooms. That's fine, but it is no longer nineteen, the nineteen seventies.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much again for participating and for your insights. And I'll just open it up for the board for questions or discussion.
We'll go with Mr. Carnes.
I liked the, bringing up the, the rec department, um, there, I think there's a lot of opportunity for the rec department to do more in our community. And I think that nothing against the YMCA. I think they have filled a need that has been there in our community for a long time. And my kids have enjoyed it and, and they do great. But looking at other communities, in a lot of places, the rec department does a lot more. And maybe access to more facilities, more ability to schedule and do stuff. I mean, I saw them this past year go into basketball and use basketball and we were a part of that. But to be able to do more of those activities and get more kids involved, um, at a lower cost as well.
Yes, that's a big thing.
You know, it's, it's different. That's the difference between that and, and what the YMCA can offer. So while there is, you know, kudos to the YMCA, I'm not throwing them under the bus at all. I just think that that brings in a whole nother level that we can, um, help our community. So I think that's, that's important.
Dr. Horsor.
Thank you. Um, we had some, uh, people speak at open forum in the month of May about the need to communicate and coordinate with the city. And, uh, not only would we need to do that, but we also need to, uh, communicate and, and collaborate with other entities, uh, such as the ones we see up here, the YMCA, the senior center and so on. There, I'm sure there are others as well. Going back to the transportation one, until 1960, the only high school in Oshkosh was located where the city hall now sits. So it was somewhat centrally located. Oshkosh West, what, what was then Oshkosh High School opened in the fall of 1960. It was the only high school at that time. It was considered to be on the fringe of the community at that time, if you can picture that. There wasn't, if you see aerial photos of that era, there wasn't much west of there. West Haven wasn't developed. That was the only high school. If, they figured out the transportation. And in that era, not as many students had their car, their own cars and so on to get to school. So I'm confident we can figure that piece out, um, moving forward. Then when North opened, uh, again, that was considered kind of on the edge of the community. And by then more kids were driving cars and so on. And, and so I, I, I don't think that has to be a stumbling block for us. I'd also like us to take a look at slide number 32. And perhaps for our October meeting, we could have some information related to the retirement of, uh, debt. Whether it's the Jefferson School or I, I don't know if we've paid off like Carl Trager School yet or not. Also, what might be some possible other sources of income such as, um, TIP district funding that may, that may come to bear. Um, and so all citizens are going to want to know, what is the impact on my tax bill ultimately? And, and that's really important. But I, I also believe that as board members, not only do we have an obligation to be good stewards of the finances of this district overall, including entering into debt, should the citizens approve of referendum questions, but also to understand that prior generations have funded the education of your children, perhaps some of you in the audience. And so to me, it's, it's our chance to pay it forward for the next generation. And as I often say, one of, one of my goals on, on the school board is to, to help us work together to make sure that Oshkosh is a good place for all of us to live, learn, work and play. And this, I think, presents us with an opportunity and presents ultimately the voters with that opportunity to decide, what do we want Oshkosh to look like moving forward? And how serious are we about economic development tied to a quality school system and quality facilities? Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Wyner and then Mr. Rose.
Ms. Wyman, and then Mr. Rose.
I have, thank you very much. I'm really excited about the possibilities that we can look forward to. As we're going through this process and going into October, two things that I'd like to keep in mind are development of community listening sessions. I think it will be critical for everyone in this community to be able to have their questions answered and understand the presentation given tonight, and I'm sure that will even be enhanced, but I think that's absolutely critical. And the other thing is working with Drew and working with the city and the Convention Visitors Bureau, understanding the opportunity cost of not doing this.
Yes, good point.
Economically, it, it makes sense to do it. We need to understand the cost of not doing it.
Thanks, yes.
That's a good point. Mr. Wright?
To piggyback off of some of the things that were mentioned before, I go to a lot of different facilities in the state, because my kids are into sports and of that age, and we're, we're way behind. And we know that families make decisions based on what school districts provide the best education and the best facilities. We know that we have families leave our district because we're behind in these areas. We know that those families aren't, aren't spending money here, you know, like they would when they leave the district. This is a real opportunity, in my opinion, for the community to come together and say, "Oshkosh wants to take the next step." Oshkosh doesn't want to be just thinking about how we survive or thinking about doing the bare minimum. We want to lay a foundation so that our employers can recruit employees to this area easier, because that's a huge issue. We want to create a situation where we can, you know, actively attract students to our area, and we want our students to have facilities that they can be, that allows them to be competitive, you know, and allows them opportunities to compete, where they don't have to practice in hallways and do baseball and parking lots, and not be able to dive, you know, because we don't have pools, and not be able to swim. You know, so this is a real opportunity for us to come together as a community, to partner with corporations, to partner with businesses, to raise money, to figure out the financial aspect, so that, for once, finally, you know, we can put the literacy piece together, and we can become great educationally, and then we can have the facilities to back it up, and we can help Oshkosh grow and thrive through a great school district and a great area. Rather than knowing that we're lagging in these areas and continue to lag in these areas, let's do something about it. And this is a chance for that to happen. Those are my thoughts.
Go ahead, Ms. Logi.
Yeah. I also just want to say thank you. When we got to the public forum and there was no one signed up, I was like, oh, no, we need to hear from these Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0 members. So, thank you very much for preparing your comments and sharing all of this with us tonight. I also just want to, you know, a lot of the points I wanted to hit have already been said about how important this is to making us a destination school district, how important this is for boosting our local businesses. I just, I see this as a wonderful thing and a win all around. I do want to kind of bring in another tone or a side that hasn't been spoken of tonight, and that is our consolidation plan. We've mentioned that when we look at this in October, we'll see how this fits with our consolidation plan. And I personally just want to make sure that everyone knows I am very committed to that. I'll share a little story, I'll try to be quick. My kids are currently taking archery lessons at Oaklawn through the rec department, which I love. It's amazing that we have a rec department that offers these things. Their PE teacher for their elementary school is actually the one teaching it, and that made them really excited. Yesterday, as we drove home from archery, my nine-year-old, it's like a 15-minute drive, spent the entire time talking about how much she wanted that elementary school. The thing that impressed her the most about Oaklawn, that's our newest elementary school, was how many bathrooms it had. She's like, "And all the kids can wash their hands before lunch, and there's wash stations that aren't even in the bathroom?" And she just was going on and on about the bathrooms, but I contrast that to, to her elementary school. Yeah, Oaklawn. She is a student at Oakwood, so she is a student at Oakwood. And she's like, "Our bathrooms only have three stalls, and we only have," and it was just, it was a sweet upbeat conversation, but when you really get to the bottom of that, like, you think about how sad that is, that a nine-year-old's envious of bathrooms and hand washing stations at an elementary school across town? Like, that was just big to me. As a parent, I have, you know, my concerns about our outdated elementary schools, and the bathrooms has never even been one of them. Next year, she will not have classroom walls. She will not have a classroom door that can be locked for security reasons. So, I just want to make sure that we're giving voice to how important it is to update our elementary schools. I am 100% excited about this, like thrilled, but I just want to make sure that we aren't forgetting our youngest students and the needs that they have, and that, and I know that we aren't. I'm not actually worried about that, but, I don't know, in my heart, just with that story yesterday, I just thought I needed to share that.
Thank you for sharing that. And that's why it's important to, to understand that the context of these recommendations comes in the alignment of that consolidation plan. This isn't kind of an either/or type of thing. And when we come to, to the board with a presentation in October, putting these things side by side will be really important to make sure that everybody understands everything that's on the table. We'll certainly have, you know, some, some sifting that we'll have to do, because there's always going to be some budget limitations. But certainly, the phase two, as outlined in the elementary schools, you know, those are things that continue to be, you know, on, on our radar as some of our highest priorities.
Yeah. And I, and I know that, too. That's why I kind of just wanted to reiterate for anyone that may be seeing this as a separate thing, like, we are still just as committed to helping students have bathrooms and classroom walls and exciting things like that.
Thank you.
Ms. Carnes?
Ms. Logi, I can relate. I took my daughter to a PTO meeting at Oakwood, or Oaklawn once, and she counted 68 windows before the Lakeside renovation. She said, "Mom, did you know that they have 68 windows in their lunchroom area?" Yeah. But I actually did have a question. My question is, we've talked a lot about the auditorium uses for the high school, but I would like to reiterate that the community uses Miles Kimball Auditorium a lot as well. I believe Ms. Oshkosh is there, and I, other big venues, Ms. Wisconsin, Ms. Oshkosh. So, it's not just the schools that would be using this auditorium, it's also other things that I might have missed. Do you have any comment on other venues that use it besides that? Because I know there's a million I can't think of right now.
Dance studio, you know, the dance studio is, yeah, I mean, Kimball Auditorium is used all the time.
It's used, yeah. Ms. Oshkosh, Ms. Wisconsin.
This provides balance, yeah. Provides balance to our community, not only for our students, you know, on the north side, but also just for our community in general, and will really take pressure off of the Kimball, and, and still keep it a very busy place, but a little bit more, more manageable.
Thank you.
Yes, my, the follow-up I, I may. I apologize on behalf of former board members' decisions on Oakwood. We didn't know high quality. We let the budget determine what we should have done and could have gone higher quality than like Lake, or Lake Oaklawn was.
Yeah. Well, thank you. My kid, and it was funny, she's like, "I don't, I love my school and my neighborhood, I just want that building at the Oakwood spot." Like, the whole car, 15-minute car ride the whole time.
That's so funny.
Mr. Carnes?
I, Mr. Wright brought up something, and you're talking, others as well, you know, running the halls of high schools for some of this stuff. It's been 25 years since I was wrestling at Oshkosh West and, and competing in other sports, and not a lot's changed. And so, I think I like the idea of we're paying it forward to the next generation, and I think that's, I think we're all there. I just, when you were bringing that up, I was like, flashbacks of, you know, running through the halls, and I'm like, wow, that's still the same 25 years later.
There's nowhere to go.
That we're still doing the exact same stuff, so.
It's time.
Thank you all.
Sure. So, no other comments from anyone else? All right, I'm gonna go. So, first off, I want to start with thanking the three of you here, and as well as all of your, your cohorts that were involved in that process. So, it's always great when we get a group of community leaders and people who understand our community the way that it is, to take the time to think about what it could be, and then to bring that information to us. And so, I think that's a very deliberative process, and I thank you for, for taking your time to do that, and, and please share that with, with your counterparts when you, when you see them. So, thank you for that.
Good opportunity.
Yes, good opportunity. Thank you very much.
So, I, I don't know that I have any questions for you, it's just general stuff. So, when I think about some of this stuff, I was thinking along the same lines as Dr. Herzog was, you know, where are there ways that we can utilize certain types of funding to help this? One of your predecessors used to call TIF funding the rainy day fund, because you never knew when it was going to absolutely show up. And we've had opportunities to improve Lakeside School because of, of TIF funding that, that came due. And so, and as, as the president of the school board, you know, that's one of the things that I, that I do, is I represent the school board on the, the review of, of TIFs and everything. So, and that's actually something we're doing next month, and so I will do my best to report back what that may look like and such to the board. So, I think that is a real opportunity, that we, over a series of years, are going to have funds that come back to our school district because of investment in the growth of our community. So, I think that's a really good path to look at that. The, you know, I'm, I, I've extremely valued the, the elements of our athletic facilities, but I think one of the elements that our community is missing greatly is a, is an additional performing arts center. We talk about how there used to be one high school in town, then we talk about how there used to be two high schools, and now we have several other learning institutions in our community that, that could also benefit from something like the PACE, especially over on the north side. So, I find that to be one of those drivers of the culture of our community, and driving in, and instilling in the idea of music and performing arts, and, you know, we talk about, you know, the TEDx coming to the grand, but picture a TEDx event taking place at one of, you know, a brand-new performing arts, you know, facility. And I, you know, and I bring that back to, we do have a responsibility to look 25 years down the line. We're gonna have detractors every year that we talk about raising more money, and where we get that money from. But the reality is that, that, that's part of our job is to, is to be those broad thinkers, and to think about the future and think about the benefits, and how it all relates back to student growth, and how that relates back to community growth. So, I, I think it's really important to, to kind of look at, especially with the PACE, because that's, that's one of the elements that's kind of many times overlooked and has been overlooked in our community. And, and so, that's, that's an area that's really dear and important to me, to, to be created. And, and I want to come back to that concept of, of looking down the road 25 years, because that's, that's what we're doing here. We're looking to build facilities that are gonna be good and usable and functional, and fill our community's needs for the next 25 to 50 years when it comes to this. And, and then I also want to start thinking about, from that 25-year lens, of how these facilities relate to how school generations change. You know, we, Dr. Herzog, you talked about how, you know, access to vehicles change over time and everything. And I'd like to believe that we will, may have a much more balanced nature as it relates to the use of vehicles and their impact on our world, in the sense of, I've been a proponent of students being able to ride the bus for free, right? So, part of that isn't just about, you know, addressing truancy, or addressing access to schools, or, or students having access to things in the community. It's about creating new generations of how our roads and communities are used. So, not everyone, and even as we talk about the rise of inflation in our community, we have to think about what that impact is on, on future generations and the affordability of such things like that. And so, I do believe that we will find a solution to that, but I think we also have to look at that, you know, look for ways to training, you know, what it looks like, public transit, transportation looks like in 25 years. You know, and how does that impact something like this? We talk about access, but it's that 25-year picture that we're, that we're trying to build. And so, I would encourage us, and like I said, I'm not gonna be on the board at that time, but the reality is that we're not just doing it for our community, we're doing it for the future generations of children, and having it through the lens of, what is their world gonna look like? How much different is it gonna look like now than, you know, from now till then? And I, and I think I would encourage us to, to think creatively, innovatively in regards to that as well, so. My, my last thing is, my other concern that, is that when we talk about all these partners that kind of do, some of them do the same things that we're doing. You know, we're talking about the YMCA, we're talking about the senior center, we're talking about the rec center, we're talking about, you know, performance facilities. Part of that, I think that goes into making this beneficial, is the location of where these future facilities might be. For instance, a splash pad, which I think is absolutely needed. I'm not sure I would put a splash pad over by the 20th Y, or by the downtown Y, or over by South Park, right? I would try to connect that with a facility or a location that's more centrally located in, within the city, because that's where it benefits the community most. And that also benefits our students most, too, because of the location of where our schools are, high schools and such. And, and that reduces the rise of the duplication of services within our community based on where we put these, these elements. So, it increases access to children, but we also want to make sure that the great gems that we have, like the senior center and our multiple Ys and our beautiful parks, are all gonna be utilized, continue to be utilized in the same way. We don't want to put them out of business, right? We want to create a, a community enhancement with this, with these services. And so, that's, I think that's just my general concern, is that location is part of the key. Future location of where we put some of these has an impact, extremely positive impact, but can it also have a, a negative impact on those other services that I may someday utilize, like the senior center? So, thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do you want to feel heated on that? Okay. All right. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with the background material on each item, or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. These mean, these are acted upon with one vote without discussion.
I move approval of the consent resolution agenda.
A second.
All right.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Moved by Herzog and was seconded by Mr. Wright, or Mr. Carnes.
Carnes, yeah.
Mr. Carnes.
One of the Christopher's.
Well, either one of us.
I would entertain a, a, a reading of the, of the consent agenda, a waiver, a waiver of the reading.
Move to waive the reading of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. So, it was moved to waive the reading of the consent agenda by Ms. Carland and seconded by Mr. Wright, so.
We have to vote on that.
Yep. Please call the roll on the waiving.
Peschel.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carland.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Thank you. Please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carland.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. There are no individually considered resolutions. Any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we already have one on, in October, so. Any last chants?
We will need to vote on, on a resolution to approve submission of a, of a resolution to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly related to the work of our two.
two students on civic education, which could come back to the board in August. It would have to come back in August, or no later than the first meeting in September.
Okay. What, what path do you foresee that going in relation to committee?
Legislative?
It probably would, I think we've talked about that going to legislative, and then coming back to the, the board for, for approval.
And when is the legislative meeting in, in August?
It's always the second Thursday, right? Or is it the first Thursday? We'll figure it out.
So we could have something to the board by, by the last meeting of August, but definitely by the first meeting of September. Okay. Any other items for future agenda items? No? I, I will just, I, we don't know when it's going to happen yet, but Dr. Herzog and I are going to be meeting this week to discuss our next paths to discussing our path related to our board goals that we went over in our, in our self-evaluation. So we're going to discuss what that might look like and what direction we go, and then we'll let you know when that, when that will be. So, any announcements, please? Ms. Carland?
Well, we just approved our new employees, so I wanted to welcome them, and we didn't, we did it a little differently than we normally do. So I just wanted to, to tell Emily that I had the opportunity of meeting your father. I work at the Oshkosh Senior Center, and he plays cards there, and he was so excited about you being here, and he told me all about you. So, welcome to Oshkosh. I'm so grateful to have you, and your dad is the sweetest guy, so, thank you. Oshkosh Senior Center. That's not? Okay, was it Catherine's father? Was it Catherine's father?
Was that?
Was it Catherine's father? No?
No.
Okay.
You met someone's father.
Who just took a job at Reed.
Took a job at Reed.
Well, guess what? We'll have to find out who it is. Is it Reed? Okay, maybe it's a Reed teacher. We will recircle, but you are in good hands, obviously.
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I promised I'd do this. A lot, there's a lot of fundraising that happens for school-related programs at Waterfest. Tomorrow night, I know Oshkosh West Band, parents will be there raising money, so if you're there, it's a way to help support them, and.
Volunteers, they need volunteers.
Yep, and volunteers. So, that's my announcement.
I'm volunteering, I'll be there.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no more announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Carland. Please call the roll.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carland.
Aye.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good evening.